All the meeting's ordered, as well my husband Cory advised you to do. Eric, can you do a roll call for us?
Uh, Tom DiBiase.
Here.
Arjen Zortman.
Here.
Jeanne Christopher.
Here.
Black Pepper.
Here.
Uh, Lawrence Halli.
Here.
And Carrie Snow.
Here.
And then staff, we have Molly O'Donoghue.
Here.
Um, Candy Daniel.
Here.
And Sarah Arnie.
Here.
And we have Jennifer here as well.
Oh. So I'm just.
Alright, let's go to item number two, approval of minutes from the May ninth, twenty twenty-three meeting.
I'm in, Jeffrey.
Alright, you got a motion approved, second. Second, uh, so, uh, motion by Jeanne, second by Glenn. Any discussion? Alright, let's vote, uh, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion asked? Okay, you're abstaining, garbage. Alright, number three, is public invited to be heard, anybody from the public? Number four, organizational updates, day's review of the resident door policy.
If we don't mind coming back to this one, since Lisa's on her way and this is her item.
Come back to that, so number five, development and project updates.
I'll take this one. So, Xenia, as you can see, is under construction outside. Um, they are, they got right to it immediately. We closed on May twenty-fifth. Um, it was a big, big effort. It's all, closing is always a big effort, but it was, um, particularly, I mean, we planned to, we thought we planned ahead so well, we got so many things arranged at the time, but then, um, there were just, just dates, um, so it was a, it was challenging and it was rewarding. And we did it, and the team came together, got it done, and then they started construction right away. So, um, we do expect, we've gotten a couple of resident questions and concerns about things going on while that's, I mean, that's obviously, that's a quite active construction site right outside, so, um, it's gonna be like that for, for a bit, especially as they're doing this hauling. Wow, look at that. Hauling activities are gonna be the most, I mean, there's always levels of disruption, but this is particularly, that's the tough part, so, um, we're just trying to communicate with residents and make sure everyone kinda knows what's going on, uh, what phase we're in of construction, um, safety things, and all of that type of thing. Um, so, the construction is supposed to be about fifteen months, so we should be leasing up in the fall of next year. Um, for Hoover, the land at Hoover, um, we have some really cool looking conceptual designs being put together right now. We're narrowing it down to, um, you know, we're getting to the point where it's, do we do a flat roof, a slope roof? It's, they're talking about how to put equipment up on top, and it's really getting down to nailing what the overall look is really gonna look like, um. We also have conceptual designs for the early childhood education center that's, uh, that's within that, so we're hoping by next meeting, we can share those with you, they're still, you know, in architecture, still, they're not necessarily, um, in like a nice PDF deliverable yet, um, but we could go over those next meeting. And then, um, as part of that, we're also, we're sharing those floor plans and things with the Wild Plum Center, who we're, we're working on, a potential partnership with to run that ECE. Um, and they're helping review those plans and tell us when this meet licensing and what do we need to tweak, and, I mean, we're talking about, we're doing, you know, the tiny tin potties and things like that, so, um, it's getting pretty specific at this point. Um, we're still shooting for tax credit application August first for that one, and so getting a lot of ducks in a row. Uh, we did learn, just yesterday, we got Chaffa released the list of letter of intents, and so it looks like it's going to be more competitive than average this year, um, not by a ton, but there's certainly more applications, um, than typical, and definitely about three and a half applications to every one award, so. Yes, Arnie?
Can we back up to the early childhood education?
Sure.
Is it strictly for the people that live there, or is it open to the general public?
It's, it has to be open to the general public because if they can't get enough people to fill it, then they can't operate the business. But our hope is to make it like a preference situation, if you're there and there's a spot available, you get the, the top of the waitlist. Um, or, or spots to open. Uh, so that's the idea there.
But who's gonna run that officially?
Well, it's, we don't have an official partnership yet, but the Wild Plum Center is who we're talking to right now. They are interested, it fits within their model and their needs really well, um, and we're talking, uh, we're going over funding opportunities and that kind of thing right now, and trying to see if that happens. So, yeah.
And if they can't do it, surprise them.
Okay, yeah, we've got, we, we definitely have, and we were not only talking to Wild Plum, we're also reaching out to a couple other spots. So, why would be interested, sounds like, and then we were looking at, uh, the Jeff Bezos has a, like a school, a foundation, and they're not in Colorado yet, but they're interested, there's, there's a couple of models out there, but the Wild Plum is our local partner. The city has worked with them a lot, um, they run Head Start programs, this is their bread and butter, um.
So they're not proud of that.
Um, so, yep, that's, that's kind of Hoover, is there any other questions about that? I think next meeting will bring those conceptual designs, everything that we're prepping for the tax credit application, because that'll be our last meeting before then, we can go over kind of what everything really looks like. Um, I wanted to update on the former Royal Mobile Home Park property, so this, uh, was a property right there, um, upstream, uh, on the St. Frank Creek, upstream of the Main Street Bridge, and that had about fifty-six mobile homes on it before the flood. We, that, most of them were completely destroyed, uh, the city helped in twenty-fourteen or so, helped to relocate all of those folks, get them into new housing, buy properties, move their mobile home, but various, various things. So the city bought that property, the Public Works side, bought that property to make the Resilient St. Frank project happen there, and that work is complete. Um, and so the remnant parcel, we are planning on using ARPA funds, uh, from the city side, using ARPA funds to basically purchase it off of Public Works and put it into the Affordable Housing Fund as an asset for the future development of it. Uh, and we're planning on doing that here by the end of June, just making that transfer happen. Um, and it will sit there until we have a viable, you know, we're ready. Right now, we've got Xenia, we've got Hoover, we've got some things lined up, we just need to time it out correctly. Um, and because of the first main transit station redevelopment that's happening in that whole area, we kinda wanna see what happens with that, if there's development opportunities that come about with that, where we could tie in affordable housing. So, um, we're just gonna hold the land, but it is going to be three, over three acres, basically land banked for affordable housing, with the intent that LHA would, um, be involved in that once the time comes. So that means, on the city side, we have three and a half acres banked for, hopefully, transit-oriented development, so it's a higher density, it's right there on Main Street, or close to it, um, so we've got three and a half acres there, and then we also still have the nine acres on the city side, on the, in the Harvest Junction area that we're hoping to do affordable for ownership with, so. Land banking is, is, we got, that's good for us to help time out our development long term. Um, and then finally, I just wanted to give an update on Crispin, so this is Crispin Two, so the building's erupting on construction up, um, near sixty-six in Maine, they're about to break ground on the last two buildings, so then we'll have all four buildings going vertical here soon. Um, and those are expected to finish probably early twenty-twenty-four for lease-up. They had some delays with an Excel line and some drainage things that they had to sort out, but they're, they're rocking and rolling and hitting their buildings, it's the last one they've started. Um, so we're working with them right now to kind of, we still go through a lot of details as they come up through construction and also prepping for, um, what this will look like once we're built. So that was my very basic development updates for the moment, um. Sorry, question four, Carol, do you have anything you wanna mention, specifically?
This, Noel, is there any movement, uh, further movement on the two properties that we've been at selling?
Yes, yes, we should always include those, we should just call this development and, um, and property sale update, so I don't forget. Um, for, the property is six fifteen Maine, so right next to Village Place, um, that's help, the, the Center for People with Disabilities Rents. Um, we have a draft purchase and sale agreement, um, we've agreed upon a price, which is negotiated because they're willing to offer us services, um, for independent living supports for those with disabilities, for people in our properties, across all properties. Um, so we're working on an MOU FM, it's about five-year term, with targeted services to help our residents, um, access resources and bringing in training opportunities and skill-building opportunities, so anybody that is living with a disability or, or supports someone with a disability, you know, anybody interested can participate. So it's kind of a, we're working through that negotiation, and we're hoping to close on that sale. It's, it, the, the timeline right now is driven by their financing, their, their bank loan, but it should be by about August first is when we hope to have the property transferred over. So, we made a lot of headway, which is, things are in legal review, um, we're making sure our maintenance records are, are available for them and things like that, just telling them whose end's right now. Um.
Do we know how many of our residents have some sort of disability involvement?
We, we did, we pulled the number of reasonable accommodation requests that we have approved to kind of give them an idea. Do you remember what that number was off the top of your head that we provided to CPWD?
No, probably close to a hundred now, it's probably been a bit, twenty to thirty the last two weeks, so.
Okay.
Okay, so it's a reasonable amount, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, then there's those who become temporarily disabled because of some kind of medical issues or injuries, so we're finding a lot of that as we, as we burn this non-assisted living world, independent living, but it's too expensive to find an independent living that we're seeing people kind of move into it.
And then on the twelve twenty-eight Maine property that's being leased by Veterans Community Project, we're just starting, we're pulling, um, records on our side to show, we have people living at Priorwood, and we wanna really be able to tell them, this is the one, the units that have funding restrictions on them, what do we do with those? Uh, we have, this many people are already working with Veterans Community Project, we have these vacancies, um, trying to really nail down what the plan would be for those units and transitioning them over, and then also negotiating with, uh, Veterans Community Project on the price that they can afford, and they're, they're taking some time to do fundraising and the type of thing, too. So I think once we're wrapped up with CPWD, we'll try and get that one going a little bit, we got our, we're just getting ducks in a row right now.
Any questions? Alright, let's go back, go then up to the review of the resident door policy. Do you lease a bit?
Yes. So we just, uh, just to include this, because we've been working on this for almost two years now, got it off the back burner. Michelle and I started this when she was still here, as public safety, fire department, EMTs have brought to our attention a lot of concerns just on the exterior of the apartment doors, who are putting, we had recliners, we had bicycles stored, we have coffee tables, we have bookcases with handles, um, you name it, different things that all interrupt or get in the way. When the resident has an emergency, but if the property was having an emergency, these would make tripping hazards as well. Some have the front entryways decorated like, uh, art museum faces, you name it. I, I could provide pictures all day long and different things. So working with public safety, me and Michelle really sat down and dug into this, we took it into a couple properties to discuss that coffee conversations. Um, just wanted to bring it out here for input.
So this is probably not a policy that would necessarily go to the Board of Commissioners, it's much more of an operating, uh, policy and just a clarification for residents, but we did want to allow you all the opportunity to give us feedback if you have anything on it. Can you kind of summarize what the, the rules are going to be?
Um, so, just for the actual door, some people have these plastered top to bottom on the door, going to just one decorative item that's meant to be on door, like a wreath or some type of sign that's meant for the door, uh, a doormat that is designed to be a doormat, we have people who have large rugs, like three-by-five rugs or bigger, trying to do runners down the front of their entryway, and then two smaller twelve-by- twelve items that can be, like, on the adjacent wall.
Part of this, is sometimes like you just kind of went over, uh, is that from any sort of regulatory body that you guys consulted, or they're just, this seems reasonable for the space that we have?
Working with our insurance adjusters, working with fire departments, kind of just getting everybody's input of what would be better and not create such chaos, because our concern is if there was to be an emergency or an actual fire in the building and people are trying to get out, with people having full chairs, storing fires out there, when you get ten, twenty people trying to exit at one time, you're gonna create tripping hazards and more issues. And then it kind of just does outline holidays, because we have some people who like to leave their Christmas decor up all year, uh, or different holidays, so kind of sending some guidance for that as well on the same.
You go.
Yeah, um, uh, this seems to be more of a guideline, uh, as opposed to, we're gonna ditch you if you don't do it, um, but it seems more of a guideline. And, um, I, I am thoroughly in, in favor of the door issue, considering what we've had and what we've seen, because you're right, they can give plaster from Sealer and Deport, and it looks, it looks awful, and it can, it, it, it isn't even homey, you know? Um, but, um, uh, my concern about the holidays, um, the restriction to have decorations down some days after the event, kind of being, um, really? I, I might, that's, that's a little, I, I, it seems to be a little bit too, bit of a minutia, that we have a thirty-day policy, you know, I mean, you know, if you put it up thirty days, it has to be down, kind of policy, and I know, and that, I think, has been, uh, expressed for, um, the holidays, you know, Thanksgiving, Christmas kind of thing, but it seems to me, just taking that and extending it to any other time of year would be simpler.
Well, that's why we kind of did also down here, we have like spring, March first to May thirty-first, like, for, like, autumn.
To extend that.
Soon as soon as November thirtieth, and then Christmas, well, not Christmas, but winter, December first to February twenty-eighth, so like, just snowmen, but you don't have Santa Claus sitting in front of the door.
Yeah, yeah, and, and, um.
Because we figured a lot of it does dual roles, like people could like leave a lot of the, the fall leaves, stuff like that, pumpkins up after Halloween for into fall, so.
That, uh, uh, so, and this is still again, general guidelines, um, and it, and, and on that note, I would like to put where you have Independence Day, June the twentieth, uh, we have Flag Day on the fourteenth, so we may as well start with flags on the fourteenth of June, and keep them up through before the July.
Then in terms of wheels on wheels, how often are deliveries made?
Uh, depends on the property.
Yeah.
And the individuals, um, typically anywhere from two to three days a week, and it's during the business week. But we have some who like to leave their large coolers in the hallway the whole time, and they stick out into the hallway.
So my question then has to do with wheels on wheels, so, do they have handles? So if somebody, can they get them inside, that's my, been my question.
A lot of them are just the lightweight styrofoam ones, or some have their own bags, it's up to the individual, and if they don't have them, I know Wheels on Wheels have provided the white, like, one-pound styrofoam.
Oh, so the individual's responsible for the container?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, because they're not gonna be home to receive the actual delivery.
Okay.
So if they forget to put up the cooler, then they're not gonna get the door or the house?
They work with management on that, they, if, um, it's non-perishable stuff, if it's more like a sack lunch, they'll leave it on the door hanging on the bag. If it's more perishable, they'll let the management know, we can make arrangements with the resident, or put in our operational label for that resident.
That was my only concern, is that the cooler, you know, they forget to put the cooler out, they don't get that.
And that's not, it, it just, some people leave theirs out all day long, even though they're home and they always get there home soon, they're like, well, but well, we, we work with them at every site already, so.
I have a question, um, this is, this is a little confusing to me, because we're, we're saying in the first part, that they have one decorative item, one doormat, and then two wide ones, and then, I'm kind of agree about the schedule, I, I think it would just be easier to have, you know, the winter, spring, summer, fall, and just say, you can display those items during this time, and then they come down at the end of the date, because not everybody has a specific holidays, and then it's like, if you have a snowman up, but they want to have a Santa Claus, then they, or they have to take the Santa Claus, like, that's still typically winter, like, if it's getting too detailed, I think it'd be more generic for the timeframe would be better, um, and it would be good to clarify that within those timeframes, they're still only allowed to have those, you know, four items, because there are many people who have a doormat that's not sealed. So, or, you may have to get up by a certain time, like that, it's, it's kind of a little confusing, um.
I like that actually, makes it simpler on management.
Well, and you're, you, you could be discussing some other holidays too, you know, longer as well, you know?
So when you, in addition to maybe your manage, it's, it's not holding right now, it's just that's a fine, you know, to tie it.
Yeah.
And it's whatever you celebrate, you know, whatever you have, it's, it's easy on you. Agreed.
Yeah, it's a holiday's birthday, I can just talk that, oh, we miss some holidays on this, uh.
Yeah, I think it's, it's more, it's easier for everybody, like, to practice.
Yes, yes.
Than an actual holiday.
Yeah, I wish.
Good with this one? You got what you needed, Lisa?
Yes.
So let's go on to item number six, items for input from the LHA Board of Commissioners, uh, a third-party property management strategy discussion, is there any of that?
Okay, so, um, I wanted to just kind of, we, we were doing this property management agreement for Xenia in preparation for closing, in pretty short order, we were negotiating it up to the last minute, so you haven't had an opportunity to really hear about this yet, um, and it is complete. But I kind of wanted to recap on it, on lessons learned, really, third-party property management is a totally new business model, not totally, I mean, we know how to manage properties, but doing a third-party agreement is a new business model for LHA, so, um, we really worked really hard, um, well, let me back up, this is what that means. Xenia, right here, is not going to be owned by the LHA primarily, we are a special limited partner, because, um, by including a housing authority on the partnership, uh, they get property tax exemption and certain, certain, uh, benefits. So, and we do want to be part of that, it's, it helps us be included in, in what's going on with the management side, or the ownership side, I should say. So, because we aren't, we weren't the co-developer on it, um, we were just the special limited partner, and the, the Xenia LLP, which is the organization that actually owns it, uh, primarily, they are primarily run by the Element Properties, the developer, right? So, LHA is going to come in as basically a contracted property manager. That makes a ton of sense for a lot of reasons, we know how to run housing authority properties, we know how to run supportive housing properties, we run the suites right here, there are so many affinities that would be good to, um, cross between the two. And so, that's the model, but this is the first time we had negotiated a property management agreement via third-party contracted service. And so, we really dug in very deep on that agreement to make sure that we were trying to look far down the road and try and anticipate what could happen in ten or twenty years, um, and make sure that we were just thinking ahead and thinking about the, the LHA's position with this property. Um, so, some of the, the, well, we're gonna use this model again here quite soon, um, the Atwood Commons Project, which this, all of these three items kind of trail together. The Atwood Commons Project is a, is putting in for, uh, Lytech credits in August, just like Hoover. It's located over off of Third and Atwood, so just east of Black Pacific Center, remember, we're all located. Um, and they are also interested in having LHA be the third-party property manager, so we wanted to make sure we've got this one right, as right as we could anticipate, to be able to use that as a model for the next one, and, and ongoing. And so, um, really looking at the things that were, that we really needed to either negotiate or plan ahead for, um, the staffing plan associated with it turned out to be really interesting, because we needed to set up the staffing plan years in advance of actually taking over property management and knowing what, what staff would be needed, assuming it's all awarded the tax credits, because you need that settled in your budget when you put in for tax credit application, so that was a challenge, because even in early twenty-twenty-one, when we first put that budget together, it's a completely different world to today, let alone by the time we lease up and staff the building, so making sure that we plan for annual increases and, um, just try and be a little bit generous upfront, so that we have wiggle room once we're getting down to it. For example, back in twenty-twenty-one, we had contracted security here, and so we put that in the budget, and then since then, we now do not have that, we have actually staff on-site as a building attendant that is working way better than that ever was, and so that completely was a totally different operating budget and, um, staffing plan, and so it's gonna be hard, we're never gonna get it perfectly right when you're doing it so far ahead, but we just learned lessons on how to try to build in wiggle room, so that we don't end up in a really sticky situation when it gets down to it. Um, we also, oh, and needs of special property needs, so this is for the supportive housing, so that, for both of them, so, um, that ends up being a little interesting, it changes the way that, that things are paid for in the budgets, with the support services and the security, it's all come, the budgets look really different, so anticipating that for special needs properties. Um, it's also interesting when we're a special limited partner on the ownership structure, which means we're negotiating, um, rights of first refusal and, or in this case, a right of first offer, that got, that's its own conversation, but when you have that and you're a third-party contracted property manager, they can't just, if we're not performing, it's difficult to just fire us because we're in the ownership structure. So how do we plan for that, to make the negotiations on the ownership side mesh with the negotiations on the property management side? These are things that we were, were, um, shifting and, and adjusting from the last minute. I mean, there's a lot of, um, technical stuff, who, who holds the bank accounts, there's all these financial, like, who's, who's, who's responsible for what on the financial side? Doing, um, cost of maintenance repairs, and, um, what other, what else, Kendra, was off the top of your head?
Security was not only in our office, but in the one.
Expenses.
But they had it in the support services expenses, so it may be us actually, the supporting services owners making down, to get paid for, if they want to serve, they just have to.
So with all this, how does the money move through, and there was a lot of nuance to figure out there. Um, who holds the insurance, and when does it kick in? Um, because we don't own the building, so we shouldn't have bill, the, the building insurance, but we have to have liability insurance, because we're operating at the building. That should not kick in at the same time as building, it's just, there was a lot of nuance to sort out there. And then the compensation, negotiating, we have a management fee, um, coming through, so it's gonna be eight percent of, of revenue, basically lease-up revenue, or fully leased revenue, I should say. And then we also have a startup fee to help us in that lease-up process, because you're working on that months ahead of actually people moving into the building. And then also an incentive fee, um, to incent us as a third-party property manager to lease up as efficiently as we can, so negotiating all of those pieces and when they kick in and how does that make sense for LHA to cover our costs, so those are just some examples of the things that we were negotiating up to the last minute that we really want to, um, that we really want to, um, we've been through it now once and we're going to anticipate that in the next one and try to plan for it as best we can. Um, so the lessons, the major lessons learned, detail budget early. Um, and really thinking about how our ownership structure is going to impact the property management agreement, even though that's a little bit of a chicken and egg scenario because some of that you're not, you don't know well in advance. So it turned out to be, um, a bigger exercise than we, than it sounded like it should have been. And I'm glad that we went through that with a good partner and figured it all out for this one and have some sort of model for how to do it the next time. So if there's any, I mean, this, this was pretty nuanced, but if you have any feedback or questions, this is just us moving into a new, new world here.
Are we in the invasion of the man with the project to know what their, what the structure's currently going?
They're, they're asking for it right now because they're putting in for tax credits August first. So I totally said that we need to get together and plan carefully on that.
Well, with Zenia, we're not getting a partnership fee, right?
We, we're not a developer fee, right? We're getting a fee in exchange for their property tax exemption, um, but we are not a co-developer getting development fee at closing or over time.
And that would even not be, wouldn't be a special limited partnership as well now and co?
So there'll be partnership fee for that in exchange for the property tax exemption. And then similar, management fee, lease up fee, incentive fee, that's what we should expect on that. So for the next one for Atwood, now that we kind of see what this timeline really looks like, we'll, we'll bring that stuff forward for discussion as we're going through it rather than, than after the fact. And here's what we had to figure out about two weeks time.
Who's, who's the developer with Atwood?
It's Brickwell. Um, they are an experienced Lytec developer, but somewhat new to this area. They are working with Sarah Bott, who's the tax credit finance consultant that we have worked with frequently. And so we, we, they've got a good resource there. Kind of leading into the next, I think we should just be going in order. Okay. Um, so this is item sixty, the Atwood Commons Special Limited Partnership. So that is coming to the board. This is, by the way, one of our advisory board meetings that just happens to fall on the same day as the board meeting. So it's going tonight. Um, that only happens a couple of times this year, I think. Um, so they have requested a special limited partnership with the LHA. They need a commitment of that ahead of their tax credit application. Um, but in this, you typically, we go ahead and calculate their, their anticipated partnership fee because we know what their unit mixes are going to do tax credits and yes, it might revise over time, but we generally know. In this case, we're going to be much more broad and we're going to say that, um, we're going to ask the LHA board to commit to a partnership and it will follow the policy in effect at the time that it actually enters to the partnership. And that's because, um, our next item, um, their income averaging is affecting how we look at property tax exemptions. And, um, for that reason, we want it to be vague because the, we have to really vet through the, that, how that will impact property tax exemptions before we commit to an actual exemption amount if we, I don't know. So now I'll pause for a sec because I'm about to get into that. But if there's any questions on Atwood Commons specifically, um, in that development that is going to the board tonight, just pause there since that's, that's the rest of item sixty.
So what does the commitment that they need look like from an LHA? Like what actually has to happen? Is it like a letter of intent, is it a full signing, what the?
It could either be a letter or in this case, it could just be the LHA board resolution saying we commit to a, a partnership.
Okay.
We're not contributing.
Uh, no. Yes, Larry?
On the, we have been out if things don't work out either, just because they signed this document, we still got.
Right. So we say, we say that, um, in the future, this project, the actual special limited partnership will come to you for approval. And so at that point, they could, you know, things could change and they can make that decision at that time. But basically, we are committing to a partnership contingent upon tax credit award. So it's really just what they need for the application right now.
Okay.
So let me give a little bit of detail about the Atwood project. Um, it's proposed to be, if, if you're familiar with the Third and Atwood area, it's, you know, that little, there's a little tiny gas station on mostly vacant pavement lot. It's that lot right there. Um, a, a long time developer in Longmont has an option to purchase that and they have partnered with Brickwell as a, as a Lytec developer to put this together. So it was intended to be a market rate, um, for sale and then switched to managed rental. Um, and then they started looking at Lytec to see, they're trying to maybe enter that field. And so, um, it would, right now is proposed to be seventy-five units of one and two bedrooms. Um, so could gear towards single people or families, not necessarily for the supportive housing, but it is right across the street from the art center. So they do want to partner with them just for, you know, voluntary services, um, but not specifically for the supportive housing. Um, and, you know, it, it's going to look like a, a four-story apartment building. Um, it's an L shape and it's got a, like a outdoor identity space and parking on the outside. Um, we could bring that, we'd actually, when we're looking at those concept plans next meeting for HOVER, we can bring that with what we have for Atwood as well, actually. Um, so basically they're, they're going for Lytec credits. If they're not successful, they will most likely convert to, back to market. If they are successful, they're going to run with it. Um, and they're interested in having an experienced property manager on Lytec project or, you know, anything regarding, um, income qualification, so.
Whatever from twenty percent to eighty percent.
Right, thank you. Twenty, so that's getting into our income averaging discussion. So traditionally for, so now I'm moving to item C. Um, it all leads together. So traditionally, CHAFA has awarded tax credits to projects that include units at sixty percent of AMI or below. You don't have to have them all at sixty percent, but the tax credit would only apply to those ones. But traditionally, most properties just do it all, sixty or below. Um, it's, income averaging is something that the IRS has allowed since 2018, but no developers really successfully, the risk was too high up until this year when the IRS finally put out guidance that made it more, you know, less risky for developers to undertake, um, knowing that things would be accepted basically. So what it means is, um, as long as your average AMI is still below, at or below sixty percent across all the units, you could mix in up to eighty percent units to theoretically bring in some eighties, which help you bring up your thirties and below, your really low income units. So it balances out because those thirty percent units are really hard to fill. Obviously, the rents are not high and so, um, it's hard to get those, a good number of those in the project. You bring in eighty percent AMI, that helps offset that cash flow problem and you can get more thirties. So then you, you have A, a mixed income community, which is, which is beneficial and you get more low income. And so that's, that's the theory behind it. And so what Atwood is doing is they do have a good number of units at thirty and even twenty percent AMI that would not otherwise be financially feasible without bringing in some seventy and eighty percent AMI units. Um, and so it's up to us to look at that spread and gauge, is that spread, are you using it in that intended way? Or is it more, you know, it's up to us to determine if that looks appropriate or if it looks like it's too high, too many higher AMI units, you know? Generally, property tax exemptions through housing authorities are allowed by Colorado state statute. It specifically says the tax exemption can be applied to a property proportional to the number of, um, units that are available for people of low income. Period. It doesn't define low income. In the past, everyone's kind of just used sixty percent because that's what CHAFA used. At this point, CHAFA is, is allowing income averaging up to, so we have some units, seventy and eighty percent AMI units. And so, um, we need to look at our policy as, as our other housing authorities across the region to say, do we need to make modifications? Does our, is our local LHA board, in this case, is also city council? You know, there is a trade-off for that. You receive a tax exemption on a seventy or eighty percent unit, um, which in Longmont, at least on the city side for our programs, we say that our need is really at fifty percent and below. We, our need is not in that range. However, if not for these, you wouldn't get the low, low ones. So it's just a, we're thinking of the policy decision because state statute does not define low income. HUD defines low income as eighty percent AMI below. Um, CHAFA is allowing income averaging. It's our local policies that were really targeted towards what do we actually need? And for our data is showing that we actually need those lowest estimates. So, um, right now, that's why the Atwood project, the SLP on Atwood is written very vaguely to come back with the, in accordance with the policy in effect at the time because we may have to bring back to the LHA board a policy revision if they want to include those seventy and eighty percent AMI units in the property tax exemption. Yes?
Well, the eighty percent. Is that strictly a financial thing or are there differences?
Um, it is, it's, it's two things. It is financial because it helps the cash flow when you have, you're getting higher rents. But then it also is built to, um, the family or the tenant that can occupy those. Those rents are set at what they can afford at their income level. And so it really is targeting tenants across those, that income band. So it does affect the people, but it also affects the project through cash flow.
I actually have a question with the property itself.
Per unit?
Differences in the units.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, no. You, fair housing means that you should not be able to differentiate a thirty percent unit from an eighty percent unit. If they're in the same property, they need to be functionally equivalent.
And typically, these are slowly percentages. So say a household moves into a twenty percent, but they get financially stable, they get some education, whatever, they increase their household income and they no longer meet the restriction of that twenty percent household, um, even at the allowance that CHAFA gives, a hundred and forty percent on the next year. Say they go over that, you can swap that unit, wouldn't be eighty percent to that now they still qualify under regulation and that twenty percent is open up to another household.
And still moving.
Yeah.
But you have to keep the number of twenty percent units and thirty percent units and forty percent that you have. And so there are times where you could be in a position where you don't have a vacancy and you have an issue with somebody that no longer qualifies, but you can't convert because you have to keep the unit in that range.
Um, we've been asking around the region because this is new for everyone. This is not just an LHA thing. Everyone is now has, um, is being faced with income averaging and now that is, you know, the concept is, is agreeable and now we're getting into the nuance. Okay, so what needs to adjust to make this happen? And so every answer so far has been that people are going to go ahead and provide the tax exemption up to eighty percent. We haven't heard from everyone though. I haven't heard from the HP or is the CHA even thought about this yet? Do you have any income averaging projects out there that you haven't even had to face this yet?
No, we only had one project, two of us with an SLP request and they're at sixty percent.
Okay.
They're not even income averaging. And honestly, I've been out for, my study called out in the office.
Okay.
So I haven't even had a chance to talk to anybody yet.
Okay.
And I took me out talking to them in their suite.
Okay. Um.
Then I think the policy goes to eighty percent.
I think we, our policy, because we include our calculation and part of the calculation is, um, the number of units at sixty percent because we were trying to build in flexibility for existing properties. So now we might just have to ask the board whether they want to make that revision, um, or what. So, yes, please.
So part of it, like, sorry, part of it is in order to get your financing, you have to do a market study. And the market studies now are showing that we have, we're at capacity or beyond capacity at the sixty percent AMI. So the tradition, that's for Longmont, it's very specific to the markets that you're in. So when you see that and you're working in financing associated with this, they're going to go, what's the likelihood that you can rent these units if there isn't a lot of sixty percent AMI units? And so, so what Molly said is you're trying to do two things with this. You're trying to maximize the number of units that you have below fifty percent AMI. In order to do that, you have to have units here. And you really can't concentrate in the standard sixty percent AMI range because there's too many units in it which impacts the financing and so.
And the ability to lease them.
And yeah, the ability to lease it, which is the financing. Because if your ability to lease the units drops, then your financing costs increases because of risk. And so it's a risk equation on the lending side. And so it's different for us, you know, for Boulder, it may be a completely different conversation where they may not need the seventy and eighty percent AMI units because it may not be saturated in the sixty percent world. And so every market's going to really dictate what they have to do in order to get the lending. So to your question, it's financial, it's, it's everything basically. At the end of the day, your market's going to impact your lending, which then starts having them with this averaging piece and other things. So there could be any number of reasons why somebody would want to do it. But for us, if you're going to income average, you need to maximize the number of units that you have fifty percent AMI below. And we talked about it yesterday. You know, my question is going to be, show me the modeling in terms of what are the financials of like income averaging? What is the financials of like on normal, you know, that normal sixty percent kind of world? Help us understand what the market study's saying and then evaluating all of that on a case by case basis because every project's going to be different too. And I think that's the challenge that we're trying to figure out is you can't just have this basic policy because income averaging is so specific to the project.
We have access to the market survey.
We do, so that was just completed for HOVER, actually. So it was actually really valuable information to see that it showed that we could fill a thirty percent unit pretty quickly. We could fill a seventy or eighty, eighty percent unit pretty quickly. That fifty and sixty, well, above fifty, sixty-ish range, that's where we're saturated and we might have trouble filling. We already know we've got really hard trouble filling that with seniors on our senior properties because that is beyond social security. Um, so that's something that we'll gauge as we look at. So Atwood's a proposed income averaging, HOVER's actually also a proposed income averaging project. So we'll be looking at those unit mixes in both, um, to make sure it's, it's meeting the goals of our organization and, and then figure out our property tax partnership accordingly. So we might be bringing this in concept tonight just to, to tell them that we might need to bring something back. Um, because we might need to, uh, augment our existing policy to accommodate this if that's what the board is interested in.
So Molly, just out of curiosity, the numbers you've got listed in here, are those set in stone or are those flexible?
The numbers.
So you're saying fourteen units at seventy to eighty, thirteen, so those are most, can always be that to that property?
Um, if that is what gets them a tax credit award, then yes. Because then their units would be tied to that requirement.
And then, so what about the other thirty-seven units? Are those tied to the AMI limits here?
Yes, you still need to, um, income qualified people going in, but the AMI limits are higher.
Do we know what range someone goes to be at, if you have fifteen at fifty percent?
We do know, I have to look it up. But, um, it was for Atwood, I'm doing off of memory from when you were looking at yesterday. Fifty-three percent of the project is at fifty percent or below. So forty-seven percent of the units are seventies and eighties. Um, and the number of units was. Oh, thirty-seven, thank you. Right, so.
Do you want the breakdown of how many at each percent?
Sure, if I've not pulled that up, I'm great. Sure, if I've not pulled that up, I'm not great.
So for Atwood, four units at 20, nine units at 30, 25 at 50, 12 at 60, 10 at 70, and 12 at 80.
So that's a, that's a pretty good distribution across.
And what the income averaging is by in the 20% units, that's what it's talking about.
So in a traditional ITech, you know, pre-today, getting 10%, 30% units in a project was kind of the, that was the norm and it was challenging. So if we're getting more than 10% below 30, that's above what we've ever gotten before.
And how oft, how often is that average income calculated and how is it monitored for the property itself? Is it, whenever there's a vacancy, you gotta see, okay, in order for it to be at 60% AMI?
It's not that, it's the unit, it's just the unit is set at that AMI level. So somebody has to be able to afford that rent with, with our, you know, policies on affordability. Um, but it's really, as long as the unit is set at those levels, then it's meeting the requirement.
But we could always swap units as well.
Swap units as long as we keep the same number of.
As long as we have the vacancy in that AMI level.
And that's, that's how we operate things now, too. It's just now it's ramping up to 80.
Well, just make some more. Or really know what that unit is capable of receiving.
Right.
About 80%.
Right. And we'll also say that developers, the two developers we've seen so far doing this, um, they're actually building in a cushion because getting somebody exactly at 80% would be a challenge. And also you're then competing with unrestricted units elsewhere that are affordable at that same rent level. And you have to still have a carrot to say, come and do our recertifications each year. And, you know, you're living in a mixed income neighborhood, which some people will value and some people will not, frankly. So, um, there still has to be that incentive there. So there is actually typically, so far that we've seen, a cushion built into those rents just to, they're still set at 80% max, but the actual income that we plan to get is going to be more of a, you know, there's some market-driven element to setting those rents to make sure that we can get them leased.
And how does this work with the waitlist? So if we have a unit that is only a 30% AMI unit, do we have to go through the waitlist? Or are we going to break up the waitlist into different AMI categories or how is that?
So are, when we do waitlist already, um, we are asking for their income upfront.
Yeah.
So that we can track if they're going to qualify for that because we're not going to call somebody for a 60% unit unless they have a voucher.
Yeah, they have a voucher and such, yeah.
Because it's a waste of our time and their time giving their hostess, hey, we have a unit. And then they're like, well, I can't afford it because my income's only 800.
So we know upfront when they're sending up the waitlist, but there you go.
Yes.
Lots of changes, new, new ways of doing business.
I mean, if there's a, if there's somebody to qualify for 60%, is there any kind of reason for them to qualify? If you don't have any, is there any way to, that's a good point.
They stay in their unit. Basically, you follow the next available unit rule. It's kind of what you do when you have market rates in the same building as tax credit. You wait till something is available and it's, if they overqualify. Because tax credits do allow them to go up to 140% of the current income level. So it will only affect those like maybe a 20% AMI unit or a 30 that we would have to swap maybe up to an 80 if they had that huge financial gain.
It doesn't affect that much?
No, no. As long as we do it when we have that next unit available and that we're proactive on it, watching it, we're tracking it, which I've done for years, so.
Yeah, we're advise you is if you don't do the next unit available, then that's where Kendra is interacting with, um, the lenders to make sure that they're, because then the lenders will come in and go, you're not doing this if the next unit is available, what are you doing? So the, the, the process has to be really tight so that you don't slip on those. Um, similar, it's kind of the opposite of what we're doing with the Village Place in that before we took over, they weren't recertifying at the appropriate income levels. So we had people in 50%, 60% AMI units that we were charging 30% AMI. And it's the opposite side of what we're talking about. And we were, they were shorting themselves the income, which that's what we've been, you know, reworking in Village Place and continue to rework. So it, it's the same process on both sides and you have to watch it on both sides. And what would the partnership fee be received?
At closing.
Okay.
So if they're successful with tax credits, then they anticipate closing being about July 2024. They're already through most of their entitlements because they had planned this as a market rate project to begin with. So they're, they're pretty far along. They're just, this is a financing package that they need approval.
I'm going to trip this, I'm all for it. I mean, it gives us the lower AMI capability. You know, with, with the, with the higher AMIs on setting both of the lower AMIs. Overall, I mean, I think we should do a project by project basis rather than, you know, a basis.
Okay. Uh, the community outcomes of encouraging mixed income developments is also a consideration. Um, and it helps deconcentrate property. I would say one thing that, you know, thinking about how this trickles down, um, because, so a traditional ITech project did this with 72 units. We get 72 units at 60% or below. Not to say that those would all be totally marketable because we just talked about the challenges at some of those levels. But now with income averaging officially, you will get, in this case, what do we say? What was our number of units?
So it's 72, 24.
Yep, so 50, 50 units, 50 affordable units and 22 that are out of that range. So when you're talking counts, unit generation counts, it's actually lower. But there's other community outcomes, there's other financial benefits to weigh. Um, so that's just something when we message this to the community and to the LHA board and city council, there's, you know, nuance.
Well, it's, maybe.
Like, sorry.
Go ahead.
If we don't do this, then we get zero affordable units because it will go to market rate.
In this case, definitely.
Yeah, and then I don't, I personally, working for a housing authority, don't think that 80% isn't low income anymore. I mean, it's, it's become really difficult for anyone under 100 and 20% AMI to find a place to live that is affordable, you know, less than 30, 30 or at 30% of their income, without having to worry about huge renting costs a year.
Right.
So that is one area for those 70, 80% units is that, you know, your rent's not going to increase in an exorbitant amount of money every year. Um, I don't know if this developer has any other incentives. Do they pay the unit utilities? Um, are there rent concessions that they're considering? Is that going to help fill some of the units that are burdened to rent?
I think we are just starting those conversations with them as we start to dig into budget and, you know, what would a property management agreement look like in preparation for their tax credit application? Um, just putting some of those broader parameters together. So that's good feedback for us to consider when we're talking to them in the next two months, month and a half.
And not to make this even more mind-numbing, so we spent some time talking about it yesterday. Not only does it depend on, you know, utilizing average income to get more sub-50 or sub-40% units, it also changes when you look at the types of units that you're trying to bring in. So, um, and I've been thinking a lot about it since yesterday. Um, so for example, HOVER is, is an interesting one because the, the value or the cost of units, think of it in terms of real estate space. So like the more units you have, the more, the easier it is to manipulate, you know, on what X20, X30. But if you want a variable that we put into HOVER that says, on the family housing, we want three and four bedrooms in that property, well, they just eat up more real estate. So for, you know, one four-bedroom, you probably get two two-bedrooms or some combination of, you know, three one-bedrooms, so you lose volume. And so where the variables start colliding against each other is they don't move in the same direction. So when you add larger units, that's going to pull the variable this way on the AMI equation. And if you pull the AMI equation this way, it's going to pull the larger units. And so, you know, that's where this case-by-case basis is so important because there may be certain cases where we have to say, um, our desire is more three and four-bedroom units, which will impact potentially the amount that are truly affordable. And we may say, we're doing that for affordable three and four-bedroom units. And it's a, it's a really complicated equation that we're trying to figure out. But you kind of have to target what you're going in and trying to achieve and then understanding how that then starts impacting all the other variables. So one two-bedroom, that's easy. When you want more than two bedrooms, it starts getting really complicated because you lose the number of units and starts impacting the financing. And then, and then you may end up where you have more market rate than you have affordable. But that's the only way to do it. Because you're going to give those three and five, three and four-bedroom, four units that you only need in our community. So, yeah, it's, it's happening.
So is that why the Atwood centers, it's only more than two bedrooms, right? And that's a lot of bedrooms.
Yeah. Yeah, if you took the same property and you said one and two, it may show itself where it's like 53, 50, 60% affordable. If you said we wanted to add three and four-bedroom units in there, it may drop into 30. But it's dropping it because you're losing volume in your smaller units and you want those larger units affordable because we know that's a need in our community. Any questions, Molly? All right, move on to number seven, resident quality of life.
We don't have anything prepared from staff. If anybody from the board has something to bring forward, this is again our standing item.
Move on to number eight, LHA reports, may update on operations, occupancy report.
So for occupancy, we did increase 2% because sitting at 93, we are up to 95. I think this is big into how we did change our waitlist procedures and how we have, um, if one person managing all the waitlist, calling ahead of time, trying to free lease these units. Um, so free lease now is 100% full. As of right now, we have one person on notice. That's going to be a residual accommodation transfer and we're already leasing that upcoming vacant, that won't even be vacant till August now. And so trying to get ahead of everything. Um, most, most properties are doing pretty good with getting these units rented. Um, still struggling with down units for meth. But like Neighborhood, we have three down, we only have one available and, um, she has two pending applicants on that one. The senior, asking seniors where we're struggling because they are all 50% units that are available. So we've been able to lease three of them to people with vouchers that can actually afford the 50% rent. But the other three is where we're struggling is trying to find seniors who qualify and can pay the rent. Um, Fall River went down for meth and that's already free lease. They're scheduled, we hit the unit, should be handed back to us on the 15th of this month. And I believe the movement schedules are right around the 22nd or 25th. Parkstone and Lodge, both, um, have pending applications on their units. Our focus right now has been on our re-acting session that's happening tomorrow. Um, the Suites, we have four vacant units. Um, three of those are down units for meth and other, um, the, the meth and the sled. And then only one LHA unit is available and that's already rented as well. So Suites has the highest occupancy I've seen since I've been here three years. Um, number 10, free lease school, prior to, we just have, we have three vacancies. Two are down for meth and one more, I believe, for the sale. And in Village Place, we're not leasing any of those units so that we have units to turn, um, prior to construction. Then you'll see the meth contaminated units, um, all in some sort. I, we'll be scheduling two more units for testing after this morning, um, at the Neighborhood. Um, Village Place, um, is a new one on this list. We have, um, 104. Um, I did find out last night that we do have meth down the hallway as well. Um, typically when we get the meth tested, they test exterior of the unit as well and they do 10 feet and normally there is meth containment in that 10 feet. So it's all part of the cleaning process. Um, they did 10 feet, that was positive. They did 25 feet and then yesterday we had to go another 35, 35 feet down the hall. So, and Village Place. Um, depending on the concentration around the doors, they will ask to test inside the doors, which we have done here before. And then if there's any remediation, we get right on that, so.
So part of this, and we can jump in, I've had some conversations with Northern County Health. And, um, so they're working with CPE on these, on these meth levels more for commercial open space. Uh, because originally the, the levels were really based on, um, homes or occupied spaces versus commercial spaces. So the, the challenge we're having, and this is really born out of the library issue that we have, uh, or not the, the Boulder and Greenwood and others have, is that the risk that you have in exposure, say on that wall, is much different than the exposure that you have within your living environment because it is really about the physical, you know, area to make sure. It's about touching where the meth exists because it's now primarily through your, your skin, you know, you can't breathe it. Um, you know, what we're learning of this other thing is also if it's in the carpet, as you're walk, walking in carpet, it kicks it up. And that's where the health effects start. So if it's in a common area, you're not exposed to it on a continual basis. So right now, all the health departments are trying to work with CPE to have a commercial standard that they're trying to bring out so we don't get into this rub. And so that's why you don't necessarily see them coming in and going, the wall's positive, we need to completely close your building. I mean, now if it were at 600, probably a different conversation. So that's a separate conversation on the health side. If you're trying to work through a re-coming to those commercial standards.
And the hallway was just over the current standard for residential, so, but, yeah. So it's just.
Nothing.
Okay.
Doesn't, doesn't affect property at all? Now, do we want to say that we do that versus that?
Yes.
Should I use the word? It's your drug of choice.
Well, fentanyl, fentanyl, there's a different danger to fentanyl that, I mean, we've seen videos of, I mean, there was one where a K-9 swat operation in a house somewhere in the midwest or east. And they finished it, the K-9 officer's driving with his dog and looks back and just sees something drastically wrong with it. It's fentanyl. So they take him to the vet, they do it, end up finding it, I think, in the ceiling. And it was just minuscule amount that hit. And what we're seeing, like in colleges, the kids that are getting exposed to it, if it's on their tables and the next kid comes in, uh, it's a different issue that's just bad in so many ways. Um, you know, how much can kill you? It's just.
Oh, it's like a few grains, it'd be like a few grains of salt.
So it has to be though, so there's fentanyl pills that people are smoking as well.
Yep.
So do we know yet, I'm asking Sarah, um, if that airborne, I mean, it's so, we don't have that much research on it yet, is what I understand.
So if it's compressed in a pill, it's, it's indicative. Not saying it couldn't, it couldn't affect you.
Just the pill or.
So we were like, you see across the country, you just feel that officers like searching a purse and they don't have any gloves on. This actually happened here. And that gloves on, yeah, you know, should have we had gloves on, yes, but, but sometimes we just don't. So officer goes in first, there's over powder, we don't know if it's cocaine. Um, it, you know, it's most likely not crystal meth because it's, there's other reasons. But needless to say, you breathe that in, you touch it, you automatically start having those, you know, the feelings of, of the symptoms and then you pass out basically. And then if you're not treated that way, then you got, so Narcan treats that, right? So Narcan treats that, right?
Yes.
And all my managers have Narcan.
They're training.
Um, we've all gone through Narcan training. We have Narcan in our desk and every eviction, we have it sitting in the hallway.
I'm not.
Is the officer okay?
Yes, yes. But we've, I mean, cross-coordinated the officer to die.
Yeah, just Google it, you'll see body cam footage of a guy just, everyone just drops. He's like, hooks his head in a car and he's.
Scary. The biggest, the scariest thing that's hit, and just a real quick update on, on, um, what's going, what's being put into fentanyl now. So Chinese are shipping in Xylazine. And some of you might have heard this from Boulder County Health, but Xylazine is being cut into the fentanyl here in, in the States for whatever reason. Um, I'm not sure why, but the reason people, the users are liking it because of the effect stays longer and they don't have to use as often. However, the Xylazine is causing basically folks to lose their limbs because they get infections worse often than any meth sores I've ever seen. And if you like looked it up in like big cities like Chicago, Philly, New York, like literally see people having amputated legs and arms, um, because it gets so infected. They don't treat it. So now, you know, I was in a meeting yesterday with Boulder County Health. They're, um, they're talking about wound treatment. There, they have some Xylazine test strips and they're, I mean, those are kind of costly, but they're coming down. So people are starting to pass those around. But I, I know here, um, as of last week, we contacted two of our house ghosts. And I've never seen sores like this in, in, uh, in Jack. So and they, their, their reason that they don't want to get treated is they, they, they don't want to not use. So needless to say, it's, it's here and that's a very scary drug.
How long, how long does it take for that usage of the Xylazine to start developing disorders?
It's person dependent. You and I can use meth.
Um.
And it's just an analogy. And you could, you could lose your teeth in, uh, you know, six months. I could get meth sores in two weeks and I could still have my teeth in six months. So it's really person dependent. It's kind of like alcohol, everyone just, you know, processes, processes are difficult.
Yeah, I mean, where we have to be careful on the fentanyl is it's not just the people that you would think would be using it. Um, it's a really, it's really showing itself in, in universities now. So I was telling Sarah, uh, the day we moved my daughter into her dorm and when she went to tech, um, we were still there that night, they had an ambulance run. One kid died and another one almost died. And they were less than five minutes from the hospital, less than three minutes from the hospital because of the fentanyl. Same thing happened, I think it was. I grew up in Boulder, guy. CSU, but my kids, I have, I have three kids going to CSU. Yeah, I have two too. But, you know, my son was telling me same thing happened at CSU and at dorm. I mean, it's not the normal because they're just cutting it into all of these other things. So, you know, you just have to be careful in every place you go into where you're dealing with. You just don't know what people are getting.
I appreciate that part, huh?
Do what? Um.
I'm just curious because I need to go call.
I thought, I thought about it. Um, the advantage that I have with my kids, because I, I talk about what I see, is that they're, they're pretty conscious of it because you never put any fentanyl in marijuana now. And so like my son will tell his friends, look, if you're gonna get leave, um, find somebody to go to a dispensary and buy the leave. Because you don't know what you're, and, and so he'll, he'll ask when he's around, but it's great. I mean, he's just, um, he's more to it than my daughter. Um, but yeah, it's, uh, yeah, it could be in leave. I mean, leave's leave, I mean, how do you know whether it's legal leave or illegal leave? You don't know. Or it could be legal leave, they put fentanyl in and then there you go. So even a unit where, I mean, we've had units where we had no group, but there were drugs in it and Sarah was part of the eviction. And they're halfway into digging it out and all of a sudden they see meth pipes and everything, meth in the unit. So you just don't know what you're getting into.
And shocking as well is the one you're talking about was a senior. So age is not, there's no discrimination there. Yeah, some of it was scary, however.
No?
I'm glad you see how crowded the, the sky. He looked like he was hiding. Or was it smaller? Sad looking situation.
Uh, let's go on to property updates.
That was just occupancy.
Well, you know, it's interesting. Well, this week, we are shifting into, I think, the property updates. Because that's the real world operational stuff that our folks are having to deal with on a daily basis. And, um, I joke, if I didn't know all of this, I don't think we would agree to step in. But, um, I think, I mean, the good news is I think we, because of our partnership on the property and public safety, I think we're better able to manage this and, and, and manage risk. Because that's what it is, it's risk management.
So property updates, um, the last month and continuing into this week, we've had, Susan's following in the mediation department of the city, coming out to do coffee and conversations with the residents. And I think it's been very, very beneficial to the residents because hearing some of their comments afterwards where they're like, oh, now I know why you guys say that, or now I know why you operate that way. This, them hearing from somebody outside, you know, what we can do, what we do for all, kind of this different types of discrimination where we have to be careful, why we say what we say. So it's just really beneficial to the properties, um, if yours are. Um, but, um, I don't have our resolve on that one. But like I said, very beneficial, continuing into this week with a few other properties. Um, the Suites, um, we have the two meth units and one leave, nothing else really going on here. Um, the last two weeks have been quiet. Um, we did have a big spike last month and some other issues, but now it's kind of settled down and quiet again here. Um, let's see. So at the neighborhood, we actually have a couple of meth units, um, proposed. We have the one that we're working through, um, that's been down from out of here. We're busy with, um, Habitat. Um, do you have any updates on what Habitat's doing?
Yeah, so we, Habitat does, you know, they do this work and they have really good, not this work, not, not remediation. The unit is clean, but they do, you know, construction. Um, and they have a lot of really great contractor contacts as well. And so, um, we've walked through with them last week at this unit and said, we're all, we, we're looking at doing like a, you know, city employer, community build day type situation. We just need some volunteer labor because we cannot afford the full reconstruction as proposed, um, from the first bid that we got. Um, and so they are looking at, um, our scope of work and putting together some pricing proposals. And we're thinking about doing it a chunk at a time. So we're gonna first look at getting mechanical and electric in and then get through drywall. And then let's assess and see what we can afford, the timeline, what's there, what, you know, benefit they can bring to the table. Because they've got really great partnerships for pricing. And then move to the next thing, move to cabinets, to flooring. Um, and so we're taking it a chunk at a time with them. Right now, they are putting together a pricing proposal to get us through drywall and, and paint and strand, I should say, as well. Um, so that is hopefully a good option for the future as well. We can build in like community build days or through their, they already arrange those or through like city employee, uh, volunteer days. But at least we're getting, we're getting to take it a step at a time. We're gonna start phasing in something like that. Um, and this is specifically for those units where we, you know, we can't afford it because insurance has already maxed out or something like that. So just help with the rebuilds, none of the, everything is clean for any of these contractors going.
So it's, Zinnia and Amwood, since we're not going to be owners, the insurance is going to be held by the other property owners? And are they able to get the meth insurance as well?
Well, then for the building, the building insurance. So we have liability insurance for our employees operating.
Well, yeah, yeah, but.
But that owner, what?
The owner.
In terms of getting a, getting a math policy?
Yeah. Yeah.
Right.
I mean, it doesn't exist for.
So it's not for private, it's not for private.
Right.
Right.
So they would be responsible for the cleanup?
So because the housing authority is in the ownership structure, it's not our insurance policy. But I think something to explore is do they have access to that type of policy because the housing authority is in the structure? It may, may not be. But. Right, we're, we're, because the tax credit equity.
They're not a housing, so they still have that same insurance.
So I'm saying, offering that has a benefit to partner with us because we're not beginning to think of the insurance.
Right.
On our end.
But you get access to policy options.
Policy options.
Let's, I'm, I'm speculating on that right now, but we could dig in on.
But then at least the, the next point is if, if there is a, a meth unit in, in these, you know, Zinnia or Amwood, are we there going to be the ones tracking that and responsible for the cleanup or managing that? Or are we gonna be in there, there we go?
Not responsible.
Not responsible, but I'm saying it's more of an administration.
That's in, it's in our wheelhouse. We have the contacts. Um, it is our responsibility, we have like maintenance responsibility. So we have credit compliance. I mean, there, it will not, we will not say it's not us.
Yeah.
Um, maybe on the cost side for an ownership structure. But, um, I think that because that is in our wheelhouse and we would not necessarily want somebody that has no idea how to do this to go ahead and do that, we would be heavily involved. Um, granted also, the goal is with all these new builds, to put meth detectors in. Okay, that the meth detectors all work and come through, we're still working for that. But that is supposed to be a deterrent in our new builds, um, to hopefully reduce that.
Also, I'm not, I'm not sure, but just a general way that insurance would break that down is that their, their adjuster, let's say there's a meth unit being involved, uh, their adjuster will probably have to, cycle or not be able to see the application in some way, right, from the housing authority as a limited partner? I mean, I, I think that that's something that they have to make decisions on themselves as well about how it all works. But if we have the resources that were available to, to help with that, it's, it's, it's a work.
We can help manage it.
Yeah.
Um, manage it as the, the same property management functions we do now when we are working on getting a meth unit back into original state.
But currently the owner, for, for example, Zinnia, the owner is required to get their own insurance. We are required to get their insurance. How they cover it is not to be covered.
Right.
Going on to Village Place, um, the biggest thing going on there is that they've had assigned parking for years and years. We gave them a one-year warning that we were going to discontinue the assigned parking. So far, so good, we're thirteen, fourteen days in, um, with no huge issues. A couple of reasonable accommodations for closer spots. But we had to do this as we move into the recent vacation because prior management had assigned even the ADA parking spots to, to residents for their sole usage. So the ADA spots were not available to any residents who needed to park there. So, um, so we're just getting into that. Um, otherwise, tomorrow Lodge has a react inspection where we're heavily coming out and doing the physical inspection, uh, walking all, collecting units, going through all our mechanical rooms. Um, this is a very in-depth, high importance inspection. So all we can handle depth in the last few weeks over there is stuff ready. As I said, you can see our construction fences are up and, uh, public safety's been a big help over here the first few days when we got the fences up, they were not in the right spots. I had huge safety concerns, I was on the phone with Sarah. She worked the magic, we worked with construction and I think right now we're in a good spot, so. And then just a reminder, we have, um, next Tuesday morning, our Fair Housing Training in the council chambers. If anybody's wanting to attend, it is free. Um, we'll have Wes, who is our fair housing and, uh, ADA attorney in-house. But please come.
It's really valuable.
Hey, can you hear a little bit? I'm gonna go to Sarah first on the safety, security stuff.
So, um, we have the meth detectors. It's been in the hands of a gentleman, Valtech, he's working with, currently are getting a bunch of our camera systems up. So, um, he's amazing, by the way. So he basically has a device, we had to get special batteries sent, um, to us, which we can replace here in the States, but it came through Zealand. Um, met last week online with Harold, with the gentleman from Zealand, got some processes and, and, you know, kind of just what we need to know to move forward. Uh, we put it in the unit yesterday at Village Place that has not been condemned yet, but we had the numbers. So recently we adapted some recommendations from Iran. Um, knowing the baseline would be good to look at these numbers and the data that we're seeing. So at this point, we have about twenty-four hours of data and I've looked at it a little bit sweaty, but haven't been able to look at it thoroughly. Uh, so that, that is going to be a discussion with staff on, you know, many things. So many things to think about that I would list, um, you know, all down to what we're gonna do with furniture, you know, in the, in this whole process. So, um, stay tuned for more on that. Suites, we talked about that. I, oh, I wanted to let you all know that, um, LHA decided on eviction attorney. And now it's in Temple's Arena to review that contract. So that, that's awesome for moving forward. Um, I worked with several folks on getting an ROI with MHP. That is done. So LHA is now added to this list of, uh, several, you know, the school districts on there, public safety's on there, this ROI for MHP to push out as an option for folks, especially in, in supportive housing environment like the Suites. And it'd be pushed from MHP and we're working on, they really tweaked this document the way they want it, but we've made some, you know, compromises in between. So LHA is now on there, so that's wonderful.
So that's ROI is release of information. Can you give a quick statement on why we really needed to be on that?
Sure. Uh, well, we found with certain individuals and circumstances that, you know, management would have one piece of information, you know, public safety would have another piece of information, MHP had all the information. And in order to help the person that's entirely as a whole, to make the situation hopefully make it better for them, we, they couldn't get us the information because there was no ROI in place. And that was just the, we kept doing, it's like head up all the time. And so it became very frustrating because ultimately the goal is to come to the end whistle at the end of the day. So huge accomplishment, I think, on getting public safety on there as well as, as LHA. So that's done. Um, and I, I need to send that all to you, MHP that has its last eyes on the document, we're all getting that out. And, um, back to Chrisman too, working with Katie on some architectural things. And a few, I'm gonna end up going to planning because some of the lighting issues that we already see on property and basically combining the two properties, but not having issues like let's spend the money now and not have problems versus building the project out, having problems and then having to spend a lot more. So working on that piece with Katie. And don't have any really, you know, it's been quiet here. Um, no other updates on, uh, properties, what else any issue?
No, I will add that Sarah's been able to, um, make a lot of residents happy at different properties as they're bringing items to Sarah at coffee, and Sarah has her coffee and conversations at each one. And they come up with even potholes or signage issues that they're seeing in the neighborhood and bringing it to Sarah's attention and Sarah's. and bringing them to Sarah's attention and Sarah's taking care of them. And so by the next meeting, they're like, yes, we're Sarah, we got to give her applause because she's already taken care of this problem we've seen for two years. So it's a big benefit for the residents as well, how it works.
Now, with that ROI, does it tend to acknowledge sharing your information at all or is that?
So they have to say, and, and it makes me able to do a very good job, entrust them to explain that for me. Like I said, that it's a retaliation, LPH, you know, the list is always pretty long, at least one different entity. So it is definitely going to be an educational piece.
Oh, so you can do that in the store, right?
Talk to them like that's about it. And it's always, it's always, um, my, my urge to them is like, let's, let's help you whoever, whatever incident may, may come forward, right? So no, it could be a mental issue, a mental health, a lot of mental health issues obviously. So off their meds, that's a big thing.
And then are the meth detectors also, you said batteries, are they also able to be wired as well or?
No.
Just battery?
Battery, battery powered. Um, there's a, there's actually two different switches on it that, it's a trip switch that when you mount it, it gets pushed in. So once it's taken off, that, that basically sends a silent alarm and then a tilt switch as well. So if someone tries to turn it, so there's two different, you know, kind of silent alarms that'll go off if people are.
Pretty sensitive.
Very. One, one per unit. And it basically, how immediately we pop up some orbit, it's air particles travel through it and there's a gas sensor inside that picks up different types of gases and it's, it's detecting the isoprocodol, which is in the meth that, so that's what it's trying to pull out.
Um, if it's a two-story unit, we may need two per unit. And so what they said is ask the medas, they probably have one on the ground floor, one on the second floor.
Has there been any sort of cost analysis going on for, um, just, um, yeah, just general cost? But from my understanding, you guys aren't familiar with it on every unit, right? It's just some, which I think, and I think there's serious, serious issues there. But have you done, um, yeah, is there any sort of cost analysis of how that's gonna look? How many units actually will be what we're putting in?
Well, if you avoid one meth in one significant meth contaminated unit, it would probably pay for us to put it in every unit we have.
Right, no, but, but that, I mean, just like now, just like what we want to, how much you can, it's a cost. I don't, I don't think it's even, right?
Yeah, we're, um, I think the market rate is five hundred dollars per unit. Um, we're, yeah, depending on volume. And so, um, yeah, we, we literally, if you avoid one significant, uh, it would pay for us to put it in every unit we have.
Okay, so we might actually go back over every single unit?
No, because that's an insurance question in, in that what would, I mean, there's, there's issues we have to find in that. And so you almost have to make sure that the units are clean before you put them in. Yeah, so if you, we would phase in, so.
It's a long term, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So like on projects like Chrisman and Zinnia.
New builds.
Anything new builds.
Village Place, it's all gonna be for new finishes.
One, basically, in every unit with any of those. How are you choosing what units to put it in or?
Those that we know of and mediated.
Okay. And that said, so we.
At first.
At first, yeah.
No, I think, I think that makes a lot more sense to me. Um, if they're, you know, it's a separate issue from why they're going in, like, only it's clean, but there was a mediation at the salon for some, so I think, yeah, their, their housing, I think that's a lot, much better way to go than just like, we think maybe use the force.
No, 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 no.
Yeah, it's not, it sounds, it sounds good.
What, what's interesting about this, so we were talking to Dan from New Zealand. There's a, so they're now going in, there's other people, I guess, other people in Colorado talking stories on this. So there's other people in Colorado buying them now. Um, I'm sure up US, but there was a, a rehab facility in Canada that had one of their staff members get high. It's the chair to somebody's unit, just smoking meth. And so they're now buying, even though in rehab, you know, you're not supposed to have anything or give to somebody apparently did. And their staff member got high, which is a different risk management than we now. I mean, I'm like, holy crap, when we do inspections, we gotta start thinking about this, do this. That becomes a work of art. And, uh, so yeah, we're learning a lot from them as they're giving us examples. And I just wanna see if it works. So they've already been.
Right. And we haven't done mediation or cleanup yet.
No, it's just protecting numbers.
Yeah, and we're gonna do tests with our normal route and compare the numbers.
And their, the other thing is their tech team is there too. So like, it's not what they said us, it's not uncommon in unusual situations that they'll come in and try to go, because let's say in my office and all of a sudden my office keeps something. It's not uncommon, they'll work with, they, they did work on, if this was to be your case, and go, okay, what's happened to the house, what have you done? And, and kind of narrow it into, oh, it's this. It very well could be though, one of the things that we're finding is that it's not unfortunately uncommon for construction, seeing in the construction world especially, and people are painting drywall of their, their vet units. And it may actually happen during the construction of the project. So we're thinking about, do we use these in the construction process? So, but I could literally walk by somebody just smoking outside, it gets my clothes, I walk in and it's true.
Depending on how you say.
Yeah. Did they interview everyone that we tried or just the ones that were recommended?
That's most likely.
So let's check with them because. Oh, I said, did they interview everyone?
Well, they did not interview me. Did they interview you? Yeah, I guess they just.
Oh.
I'll double check.
They may not have interviewed the housing authority because they don't do that, I kind of suspect.
I, I'll double check because Sean asked. I'll double check.
Let's double check.
There's something on there.
But they can't do it as a council.
Right.
They have to do it as a board, so it may be a different, it may be set in a different time.
It must be.
Because we've asked them to separate the interviews all from the city piece to make sure that we protect the integrity of, you know, putting a firewall between the council and that advisory board, check with them.
So I guess the question is, when do we hear because there's a big change that was possible? So can we come to July, we need, we need to know when we're gonna be in July?
Let us find out like, yeah, that's, that's, first off, just that's. All right, any other business anybody has? Yeah.
Anybody's interested tomorrow, Senior Center is the one for, I'm going to have a live meeting. Tell them the word, you had a script, you have a distance, you have orders, you have your own new walls. I'm working with the law's provisions.
What time is that at?
Six thirty.
All right, so let's turn at ten forty-two.